I'm going to call the meeting to order. If everyone could be seated, please. I can't see you around the -- I can't see you around the -- Thank you. I couldn't see over that. Okay. We're going to have a roll call by our city clerk, Kathy Valdez.
The records shall reflect that all members are present.
If you'll all rise and join us, the Pledge of Allegiance will be led by Councilmember Aguilera.
Please join me in honoring our nation's flag. Ready, begin.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Next thing is the approval of the agenda by City Manager Patrick Johnson.
Thank you, Mayor. There are no changes this evening.
Okay, this evening we have two presentations. Our first presentation -- oh, forgot the Brown Act notice. One more thing. Brown Act notice, in accordance with the Brown Act, I'd like to announce that as a result of convening simultaneous meetings, the members of the Buenos Sanitation District will receive compensation of $147.75 for the district meeting pursuant to Buenos Sanitation District Ordinance 2006-1. So, then we did the approval of the agenda. Now the presentations, and we have two presentations. Our first presentation is the results of the November 8th, or the number 6, 2018 General Municipal Election. City Clerk Valdez will provide the staff report.
Thank you. The results of the November 6, 2018, General Municipal Election were certified by the San Diego County Register of Voters on December 6. The total number of ballots cast in Vista was 29,329. The certified results show that Judy Ritter has been elected to serve as mayor, Karina Contreras has been elected to serve as city council member for District 1, and John Franklin has been elected to serve as city council member for District 4. Also, Measure Z and Measure AA have passed. A resolution is presented tonight to adopt these results, and that's the end of my presentation.
Okay, with that, we're going to do a hand vote. Does that mean they raise their hands?
Yep.
So, okay, so, everyone in favor, please raise your hand.
We need a motion.
We need a motion.
Move the resolution.
Second.
Everyone in favor? Okay. The motion passes unanimously. So, our second presentation is a proclamation declaring Tuesday, December 11, to be Council Member John Aguilera Day in the City of Vista in recognition of its service to the community. So, um... I don't have the proclamations down there. It's down there. I wish everybody could -- okay. You all have a train down there? Now I'm on. Oh, I am, okay. Okay, this is the proclamation, and I'm going to read the proclamation. Whereas Deputy Mayor John Aguilera was born and raised in Vista, a proud Vista high panther and Vista Planning Commissioner from 2004 to 2010, was elected to the Vista City Council in 2010. He was appointed and served as Mayor Pro Tem in 2011 and Deputy Mayor in 2014, 15, and 18. While representing the city, Deputy Mayor Aguilera has served on many regional boards and commissions, including the North County Transit District, the San Diego Association of Governments, which is Sandag, the Board, and Regional Planning Committee, the Encina Waste Water Authority, the North County Dispatch Joint Powers Authority, the facilitating access to coordinated transit, which is the fact board, and the city's Investment Advisory Committee. Whereas Deputy Mayor's leadership has helped ensure financial stability for the city while maintaining essential community services through the adoption of fiscally sound operating budgets and policies that support increasing and sustaining reserves. Deputy Mayor Aguilera was instrumental in the revitalization of downtown that has put Vista on the map as a tourist attraction. He supported continued development of strong, safe neighborhoods, including the investment of $10 million in community park improvements and renovations, including two new skate parks and the construction of the Linda Rhodes Community Center. Whereas many successes have been achieved during Deputy Mayor Aguilera's tenure on the city council, including completing Phase 1 of the Paseo Santa Fe project and the initiation of Phases 2 and 3, an all-time low crime rate for Vista, the elimination of Vista's multi-year structural deficit, the increase in emergency reserves, significant investments in street and roadway improvements, the development of the craft brew industry in the Hyatt Place, Myriad Town Center, and Ayers Hotels, and obtaining a $1 million grant for the Buenos Vista Creek Extension. Whereas Deputy Mayor Aguilera has given his time to numerous causes and issues and has been active in several service clubs, including the Boys and Girls Club of Vista, serving as president of the Vista American Little League and coach for eight years, as a member and past president of Migos Day Lions Club, and as a board member of Faith Lutheran Church and the Alta Vista Botanical Gardens. Whereas Deputy Mayor Aguilera has always made the needs of the entire community his top priority, putting the well-being of all Vistans above any outside interest. So now therefore, the mayor and members of the Vista City Council express their sincere appreciation to Deputy Mayor John Aguilera for his service to Vista residents and surrounding community, and hereby proclaim Tuesday, December 11, 2018, as Deputy Mayor John Aguilera Day in the City of Vista. So congratulations to John. We also have presentations to John of... First, we have a street sign for him. John Aguilera Drive, which is pretty nice. He can put that wherever he wants. Well, maybe not wherever. Maybe not wherever. We also have outgoing council members, this beautiful dish that was by Bobby Bedford, right? And so that has a seal on the back of the Vista, the City of Vista, that you can look at. That's very pretty. And then we have one other thing. Then we have very few of these left. So, this is a pewter plate. It says, "America's Climatic Wonderland." It's been, we've had these for many years. We had a bunch of them that were ordered, and we have just a few left. And on the back, it says, "Deputy Mayor John J. Aguilera, City of Vista, 2010 through 2018. With sincere appreciation for your dedication and commitment to the City of Vista, we commend and thank you for your years of invaluable service and wish you well in your future endeavors." So we have that also for him. So, congratulations to John. So Deputy Mayor has made an important and lasting impact on our city. In every office John has held, government employee, civic leader, public servant, he's given his all. I believe Deputy Mayor Aguilera can look back with great satisfaction at all that the City of Vista has achieved together over the past eight years. It's been my pleasure to serve and work side by side with John. During his leadership and service to our community, there was a constant that defined his work, his clear vision for Vista's future and willingness to work effectively with others. He's been instrumental in working to move many projects forward, and his service to the city has benefited all of us and will continue to do so well into the future. It's been my honor and a great privilege to serve with John Aguilera on the city council and to be his colleague and friend. So thank you to Deputy Mayor Aguilera for the opportunity to work together to help realize the city's great potential and to collaborate with someone who always made decisions with the best interests of our community at stake. So, at this time, do you want to say anything to... Okay.
I'll try not to cry. I just wanted to thank, first of all, the City of Vista, the people of Vista, for the years that I've been allowed to serve you. And, you know, I was thinking back with all this, you know, it hasn't been just the last eight years for me. I was on the planning commission, as the mayor mentioned. When I was on the planning commission, we were still -- actually, we weren't even in this building yet. So, you know, I look at this building, and I feel like I had a little contribution to that with some of the other planning commissioners that are here today. Our Paseo Santa Fe, the first thing we looked at was the Sonic, which I was very opposed to at the time, but through the mayor and at the time Rita Geldert, our city manager, kind of convinced me of the wisdom in actually having our first business and the first draw to Paseo Santa Fe. And since then, as you can tell, our downtown has really flourished, and it continues to grow, and I hope the city council will continue with that vision. I'm sure they will. But I'd like to thank staff, because they're the ones that really make this work for us. You know, without them, none of this would be possible. I want to thank Patrick, I mentioned earlier today, that, you know, he's like the navigator of the city, you know? He's the one that helps guide us, the guiding light for Vista. And he's very well-respected throughout the county, wherever I go, Sandag, North County Transit District. I hear very positive things about Patrick, but I also hear very positive things about our staff. I mean, we have an amazing staff, and I've had the opportunity through my involvement in organizations throughout the county to work with other staff, and I know that our staff is very special. And I would also like to thank our city attorney. We're really lucky to have this guy. Again, I've worked with many different attorneys and other organizations. We're really lucky to have him. And I also want to thank Kathy, Claire, for all they do in the city clerk's office. I want to thank my mom. I think she's probably out at this point, but for all her help in campaigning, walking. She even got bit by a dog for me, so... But I also want to thank my family. My sister's here. I want to thank my wife for all her support, and my kids as well. This job does take a lot away from you, and, you know, it takes away from your family. So, I really appreciate them lending me to the city and for the things that I wanted to accomplish. And someone else I want to thank is Donna. She does a lot behind the scenes for me. She works for me at my business, but she helps a lot in scheduling and working with Doris. I want to thank Doris as well. But anyways, again, I just want to thank everybody, and I want to wish the new council the best of luck. Keep up the good work, and I want to wish Vista the best as well. Thank you.
I just want to say, thank you, John. You've left an indelible mark on our City of Vista with your diligence, your passion for our city, and your leadership, and you've inspired others to continue to reach for a better city. And so, I don't want to say farewell, but we'll say goodbye for now. You'll be around, so I expect him to be fully involved in the city still and other areas. So with that, I guess we're... With that, we'll go back up there. Okay, at this time, City Clerk Kathy Valdez will administer the oath of office. I'll take my oath first, followed by City Councilmember-elect John Franklin and City Councilmember-elect Karina Contreras. I, Judy Ritter.
Do solemnly affirm.
Do solemnly affirm.
That I will support and defend.
That I will support and defend.
The Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
Against all enemies.
Against all enemies.
Foreign and domestic.
Foreign and domestic.
That I will bear true faith and allegiance.
That I will bear truth, faith, and allegiance.
To the Constitution of the United States.
To the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
That I take this obligation freely.
That I take this obligation freely.
Without any mental reservation.
Without any mental reservation.
Or purpose of evasion.
Or purpose of evasion.
And that I will well and faithfully.
And that I will well and faithfully.
Discharge the duties.
Discharge the duties.
Upon which I'm about to enter.
Upon which I'm about to enter. How about a family picture? Everybody, everybody. Come on, Brittany. Family picture. The last, when I did this four years ago, he was like four days old. This one. This is Councilmember Franklin's turn.
I, John Franklin.
Do solemnly affirm.
Do solemnly swear.
That I support and defend.
That I will support and defend.
The Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
Against all enemies.
Against all enemies.
Foreign and domestic.
Foreign and domestic.
That I will bear true faith and allegiance.
That I will bear true faith and allegiance.
To the Constitution of the United States.
To the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
That I take this obligation freely.
That I take this obligation freely.
Without any mental reservation.
Without any mental reservation.
Or purpose of evasion.
Or purpose of evasion.
And that I will well and faithfully.
And that I will well and faithfully.
Discharge the duties.
Discharge the duties.
Upon which I'm about to enter.
Upon which I'm about to enter.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
I just want to say how impressed I am that you did that completely from memory.
And next is Karina Contreras, our new council member.
I, Karina Contreras.
Do solemnly affirm.
Do solemnly affirm.
That I will support and defend.
That I will support and defend.
The Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
Against all enemies.
Against all enemies.
Foreign and domestic.
Foreign and domestic.
That I will bear true faith and allegiance.
That I will bear truth, faith, and allegiance.
To the Constitution of the United States.
To the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
That I take this obligation freely.
That I take this obligation freely.
Without any mental reservation.
Without any mental reservation.
Or purpose of evasion.
Or purpose of evasion.
And that I will well and faithfully.
And that I will well and faithfully.
Discharge the duties.
Discharge the duties.
Upon which I'm about to enter.
Upon which I am upon, upon which I am to enter. Thank you.
Congratulations.
My mom and my brother. I'd like to welcome our newest city council member, Karina Contreras, and congratulate Councilmember John Franklin in his reelection. And we're going to recess for about 20 minutes to enjoy cake outside the council chambers and to celebrate new beginnings, and we will then convene a council meeting. So we're recessed for about 20 minutes. So we'll recess for about 20 minutes. I just want to remind everyone that the Vista Municipal Code requires members of the public to observe order and decorum at the meeting and to conduct themselves in a courteous manner. The ordinance was adopted to allow for public input and to facilitate city business without disruption of the meeting. So applause is appropriate for the items under the presentation portion of the agenda only. This is also listed on our agenda cover sheet. So anyway, so I'd like to, with our November 2018 election results certified and now official, I would once again like to welcome our newest council member, Karina Contreras. I look forward to working with her and building a relationship as we work towards fulfilling our city council goals and then addressing current and future policies and issues. So congratulations again to Councilmember John Franklin on his reelection. And Councilmember, do you want to say a few words?
Well, I'd just like to say thank you to the people of the 4th District for placing their trust in me again, for giving me the opportunity to continue to sit with you and to serve our community and work in its best interest. And of course, I want to thank my wife Shauna for being without me this evening and so many other evenings and days that this job requires. Appreciate her giving of me so I can do this. And again, thank you to all of you. It's an honor to serve with you.
Thank you. Councilmember Contreras, do you want to say a few words?
Yes, I would. You know, it is the highest honor to be here representing the city of Vista and being extra accountable to my neighbors in District 1. And I really look forward to working with the council and the mayor and making sure that we work on common ground issues that are only going to make our city better. So thank you, everybody who voted. Your voice was heard, and I hope that everybody continues to come to council meetings.
That motion passes unanimously. So with that, we will now go to item number C6, which is always stop on Maryland Drive and Maryland Elementary School driveway. And we're going to have a report on that from Sam Hossein or John Conley.
Thank you, Mayor. Sam Hossein, our traffic engineer, will be giving the report. Always stop, Maryland Drive and Maryland Elementary School driveway. So the background on that is that the Vista Unified School District requested staff to observe school traffic around Maryland Elementary. And during our observations, we noted difficulty for pedestrians crossing Maryland Drive at the school driveway. And that's the main exit driveway of the school. So they have a driveway that comes in off of North Avenue. The traffic circles through the parking lot and comes out onto Maryland Drive. And there's also a lot of pedestrian activity because there's a lot of parents that pick up and drop off on Maryland Drive. We've also studied this school as part of our Vista Master Safe Route School a few years ago. And one of the recommendations actually was to install an always stop at this location. In response to this specific request, we conducted a more quantitative evaluation where we considered traffic volumes, pedestrians, and other conditions. And the evaluation determined that it meets the standard criteria for an always stop. So also, if the always stop is installed or approved, the installation of a crosswalk at this intersection will be also a part of the installation and will require the relocation of a few mailboxes, construction of a curb ramp, and a short segment of asphalt sidewalk on the east side of Maryland. This is a picture of the area as well as the proposal. So you'll see the crosswalk across Maryland. The asphalt sidewalk is kind of that vertical thick line. And then there's a few mailboxes that would have to be relocated, as I mentioned. So the recommendation is to establish an always stop at the intersection of Maryland Drive and Maryland Elementary School driveway.
Okay. We have one speaker. Do you want to hear the speaker first?
Okay. It would be Ralph. I think it's Wood, if I can read it right.
Yep, right here. And each speaker has three minutes.
I'd take all of that. Thank you very much for allowing me to speak before you today. I live at 1116 Maryland Drive. And I am opposed to putting another stop sign on Maryland Drive within a couple of hundred feet of an existing stop sign at Maryland Drive and North. The issue is that there are not enough sidewalks on Maryland Drive. You'll notice that on the eastern side of Maryland Drive, there are no sidewalks there. And so you have people who are parking on the road in Maryland Drive, and they're going across the street getting their kids, running across the street as well, all along Maryland Drive, all the way down past the front of our house, which is two blocks away. The issue also is exacerbated by the situation of this stop sign would impede traffic on off-school hours. It's an inconvenience for everybody in the neighborhood when school's not in sessions for those two times during the day, early in the morning and later in the afternoon. I think that a more comprehensive examination of the problem with Maryland School and the pedestrian traffic would bring the city council to a place of saying, we need to have sidewalks on the east side and on the west side, all the way down to Highland. Because we have, as I said, two blocks away, we have people who are crossing because the sidewalk goes on the west side for two blocks, then ends, and a half a block later, it starts up on the east side, then it goes for another block and a half, and then there is no sidewalk whatsoever all the way down to Highland. So you don't have just kids crossing over at this point, they're crossing over all the way down Maryland. On top of that, Maryland School has provided crosswalk attendants who stop traffic already with their banners and with their outfits that they wear and wave people across as the school is being let out and the school is being let in in the morning. So what I see is that for us who are residents that live on Maryland, it's an undue hindrance for the rest of the time that we live there, driving back and forth, just to accommodate a short period of time. So I'd ask you to seriously consider not voting for the approval of the stop sign, which quite frankly, having lived there, and not just observed it, you know, day in and one day or another, having lived there, see people blowing through the stop signs anyway and going a lot faster. You know, we've seen people put up the, or the city has put up those, you're going such and such a speed, and it's been recorded a lot faster than traffic, or I should say the posted limit. I think it's a short-sighted solution. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Okay. Councilmember Rigby.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I do have a couple of questions for you on this one, talking about the school. What has the conversation been with the school district regarding the traffic and the pedestrians at this site?
We've worked with the school district closely over the years, observing traffic at this site, as well as looking at the traffic inside the parking lot. And this parking lot actually happens to be one of the better-operating school parking lots, just because it's bigger, and the traffic comes in from one side, from north, and comes out onto Maryland. So I think it's, as far as the school parking lot goes, it's optimized. It's just a number of students. There's a lot of students, a lot of parents, obviously, that opt to drive and pick up and drop off, and it's just, you know, gets congested. And this is typical of schools. You get people parking, you know, kind of in the whole perimeter of the area. So, you know, the stop sign is just basically to facilitate, first of all, the school crossing, the pedestrian crossing, as well as the school traffic coming out. Right now, the school has a no-left-turn restriction coming out of the driveway, which really sends a lot of traffic south, forces it south in Maryland. This stop sign would allow that left to be made, so kind of disperses the vehicle traffic more as well.
How effective have the school crossing guards been? Has there been a problem with that? And would they not be allowed with the use of the crossing guards? Could they still not make the left-hand turn?
Yeah, that would be a much bigger operation to control, you know, all the streams of traffic and the pedestrians, and it's not the appropriate operation for crossing guards. Their role really is more like just assist to pedestrians, and even that, I mean, you know, there's a big flood of pedestrians. I don't have the volumes, but, you know, we had like 50 or 60 in one hour crossing there. So regulatory device like a stop sign would be more a positive control, stop the traffic in all directions.
And do we have any plans for, and I don't know if this is a question for you or for Mr. Conley, but talking about the sidewalks not being complete going down either side of the street, do we have any plans in the future to address that and to install sidewalks over there?
Yeah. Part of the, you know, the Safe Route School, that we did the master plan, looked at sidewalks at all the schools too. And this is, you know, kind of, we have, I guess, a systematic way. A lot of these are very costly, so we go after grants. And there are other schools, obviously, that don't have sidewalks as well. So a lot of it gets installed with grant money, and maybe John can comment on some of the annual CIP money that we are doing sidewalks with as well.
So we do have some annual money that comes in that we spend every year to do sidewalks in certain areas of the city, but with respect to safe routes to schools, we generally look at trying to put a sidewalk in where there's not one. And if we have a sidewalk on one side of the street, then we're moving to the next school to try to find a location where no sidewalk exists. Once we wrap all those up, then we'll come back and start looking at these streets. But just because it's a huge financial burden to put in the sidewalks, acquire the right-of-way, and the construction of it becomes extremely expensive when dealing with individual property owners along the way. Without grant funding, it's almost impossible for the city to build out our sidewalk system. And so we're relying on the Safe Routes to School grants and going through that process of identifying where we need them most as priorities.
And my last question is, if we were able to find all the money that we needed to completely improve the sidewalks on both sides of the street, would that change the necessity for another stop sign? Because I do know that there are, it's a lot of stops, and it's a big ask to put another one right here. So if we found the money, would it make a difference?
Not the sidewalks, because the stop sign is, I guess, even though it accommodates pedestrian crossing, but it really still is supporting the motor vehicle traffic in the area, because it's still relating to the pickup and drop off by car, as well as the left turns out of the driveway. So the sidewalks would support the existing pedestrian traffic, that, you know, the people that actually walk from home, school, school, home, and would be a good thing, obviously. But I don't think it would affect kind of the operation at this intersection.
Okay. Sorry, that wasn't my last question.
Sure.
We have the same situation over by Breeze Hill Elementary with a new stop sign that we put in over there, that the stop sign is there 24/7/365. The kids are not. Have we figured out a way to manage that intersection outside of school time that people don't actually have to stop for absolutely no reason and no cross-traffic? Is there, have we been looking at that? I know that was a discussion that we had when we put that stop sign in it over there. So that's something that we really should try to figure out how to address that, because it is a nuisance.
And short of a very expensive solution, unfortunately, there's, you know, nothing. And that's why stop signs tend to be kind of the quickest thing that we go to, because they're very low cost, because, you know, the only other option would be a traffic signal, which is very expensive, or maybe a roundabout, which would be probably more expensive in an area like this, because you need a lot of room. So these are, you know, stop signs are sort of, I guess, a temporary, long-term solution until...
I still would like to see, I don't, like I said, I don't know what the answer would be, or even where to begin to think about it, but it really is a nuisance to have a stop sign where there is no traffic, no cross-traffic, and no school in session. So somewhere down the road, no pun intended, we should really look at a way to mitigate that portion of the problem. That might help the neighborhood there. So, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Councilmember Green.
All right. So I was assuming that this had something to do with the Safe Routes to School Plan that the school district's been working on for years to protect basically our kids, right? So even though it's a short period of time, it's because they see a need to protect the kids in that area at the peak operating time. This is a newer school, Maryland Elementary. For those who don't know, it's not one of the older schools, and it was actually designed for single-car drop-off and pickup, as a lot of the schools throughout the city of Vista were not designed for. So in my opinion, it's probably faulty design by the school district and not designing it with a stop sign and crosswalk initially, because you actually can only enter the school off of North, and you have to exit off of Maryland there. So you can't even turn left on North to go in there. So I understand the need for the stop sign. I also understand Councilwoman Rigby's, you know, saying that, hey, when there's not school in session, it definitely is a nuisance. I don't know what the cost is for like a yield light on top, and maybe a sign that says, hey, yield when flashing, stop when it's not. I don't know if that's any type of solution you could do that would be cost-effective, you know, to kind of get them to roll through the stop when they don't have to. There is a stop on Highland and a stop on North, but I definitely understand the, you know, the crosswalk there and having the stop, because you can't put a crossing guard in the middle of that road without a stop sign, because people are moving down there pretty quickly. So I definitely understand that. We'd love to have more sidewalks. I'm sure that it's on the CIP list somewhere when we get to it, but for now, I think that this is something that's going to protect those kids at Maryland, and there's only more and more kids, you know, going to that school right now, too. So this is something that I support.
Councilmember Franklin.
My question was also about the sidewalk and the potential to build it, so it's been answered.
Okay. We've seen, no other comments from anybody? I would entertain a motion.
I move that we adopt city council resolution establishing an always stop on the intersection of Maryland Drive and Maryland Elementary School driveway.
Okay. Do I have a second? Can I have a motion in a second? Please cast your votes. That motion passes unanimously. The next item is item number 10. That is establishing an implementation calendar for Measure Z, the Citizens Medical Cannabis Business Initiative of 2017. So with that, I have, do we need a report? Would you like a report? Yeah, okay. Little report. Daryl? Oh, right here. Our city attorney, Daryl Piper.
Thank you, Mayor. Yes. Measure Z established a variety of timelines for its implementation, and those timelines are all expressed in terms of the number of days from one event to another event to possibly a third event. This calendar is an effort to inform the public as to the actual days of the calendar year when those events will take place. So each event is staged off of one of the other events. They're not necessarily sequential. Some relate to an earlier date, but it gives the council and, most importantly, the public and people who are interested in submitting applications, the days in December and in January and February, when certain events will take place, culminating in the issuance of licenses sometime in the period of February 21 to February 28. Be happy to answer any questions.
Okay. We have one speaker. Do you want, Councilmember Green, do you want that? Do you want to hear the speaker first? Okay. Damian Martin.
My name is Damian Martin. I'm a cannabis attorney. I do cannabis licensing and regulatory work throughout the state. I've been doing it as long as it's been really possible to do it in the state, which was in late 2015, early 2016, when the state passed its Medical Cannabis Regulation Safety Act. I represent a bunch of clients, collectives, cooperatives that are ultimately going to submit an application under Measure Z. I'm up here speaking because I wanted you guys to pull this item off the consent calendar, because I just think there's more consideration that can go into it than just a kind of flat, oh, there it is, those are timelines in the ordinance, let's just kind of accept it. I think you could shape the policy of the applicants that come in based on how you leverage and throttle these timelines. If I were going to do this, I would literally, on December 21st, I would release the applications and announce the submission date seven days later on the 28th. You have 15 days to prepare your applications. I don't believe you need it. Under Measure Z, the applicants are supposed to devise and bring their own forms, so the forms that you need to produce are really kind of bare minimum. And the reason why I say that and why I'm suggesting that you do that is if you enhance and kind of turn the screws on the timeline here, the applicants that you get are going to be the best ones, the ones that are most prepared, the ones that have been looking and being in Vista for the last three months, looking at property and getting their plans together. If you let this go out on the January 22nd, you're going to get all the riffraff, all the speculators, because you're giving them plenty of time to kind of ramp up and get an application together. I doubt many people would be willing and able or capable to submit an application on the December 28th. I think that's a good thing for you guys, because the applications that you give time, the more time, the, you know, the lower-quality applicants can get their stuff together. Whereas if you don't give people a lot of time, only the really high-quality applicants are going to be able to do this. That's really all I have to add. I just, like I said, want to open the discussion on it. I think there's more to it than meets the eye. And like I said, you can really shape policy here, and when you're kind of dealing with Measure Z, which admittedly is ministerial, I don't think that's a bad thing. I think your staff is going to have a lot of say on how these applications look and which ones are approved. But this is a really great opportunity for city council to kind of set policy here and kind of dictate the terms of this application process. And I think fast is good. I get it, it's going to be a little bit of burden on staff, but I don't think there's a ton of staff burden with this application form. So thank you very much. Have a good evening.
Thank you, sir. Councilmember Green.
All right. Thank you for the information. I just wanted to get clarification, and thank you for your presentation as well. I thought all this stuff, December 11th, December 21st, January 7th, January 14th, January 22nd was pretty quick. I don't know that we could have it ready faster. have it ready faster. I'm assuming that we're working within state timelines and guidelines, Daryl?
Actually, we're working within Measure Z's timelines.
Okay.
We are faithfully following everything that is in, was put in Measure Z by its authors. While it might be possible to speed some things up, I think this is a very fast track, certainly compared to any other city in the county, or perhaps in the state, who's undertaken to do this. And there is some considerable effort, which we're involved in now.
And a question for you. It says, February 21st through 28th, the end of the 30-day period is allowed for the processing of applications. And that's when the notice of completed registrations will be issued. In the event we issue the notice of completed registration at that day, what's the timeframe look like for citizens, as far as when does, when does the ribbon-cutting happen, per se, if that's happening?
Once the city issues the license, then it will be up to the state to issue its license. And until that happens, there won't be any ribbon-cutting. We assume the state will act very promptly, but that's something that's not within our control.
Okay. Those are all my questions. Thank you.
I've seen any other, if nobody else has any comments, I would entertain a motion.
Okay. I move that we adopt city council resolution establishing the implementation calendar for Measure Z, the Citizens Medical Cannabis Business Initiative.
Do I have a second? Somebody? Nobody?
I'll second that.
Okay. Have a motion in a second. Please cast your votes. That motion passes unanimously. So the next one that I did, that was pulled up the consent calendar was item C11, administrative personnel changes. And Human Resources Director Dolores Gascón will provide the staff report.
Thank you, Mayor. This staff report concerns three items. First is an update to the Management and Confidential Employee Compensation Plan. We call it the MCP. The MCP has the following changes. It's been extended through June 30th, 2021. It includes 2% salary increases for fiscal year 1920 and fiscal year 2021. There are changes to employee benefit cost shares for benefit years 2019 and 2020. And it includes the city facility holiday closures for December 2018 and December 2019. The second item is an increase to mayor and city council compensation effective the first pay period in July 2019. The mayor and council compensation amounts were last adjusted in 2010. The mayor and council compensation would be tied to San Diego County CPIU for the previous December, and would not be greater than the lowest increase any employee group receives. And this practice would continue in future years. The third item is a change to the citywide classification and compensation index. Staff recommends increasing the salary bands for the deputy chief and emergency services officer classifications. And the increase will bring these positions to median for the county. This completes my report, and I'm available to answer any questions.
Okay. Any comments? Or, yes, Councilmember Green.
I just had a quick question for you in regards to the deputy fire chief classification emergency services officer. The reason why their pay increases, and I had spoken with Patrick as well, I just wanted you to say it one more time, is that they weren't brought to meeting all those years ago, when the rest of the firefighters were, right? So that's why it's such a big increase, per se.
That is correct.
Okay. Because I, something I've always supported. So, okay, awesome. Thank you. With that, I guess I will just once again move that we adopt the council resolution amending management and confidential employee compensation, as well as the current salary compensation to the mayor and members of the council. And lastly, the citywide classification and compensation index, repealing the provisions of any resolutions conflicting herewith.
Okay. Have a motion in a second. Please cast your votes. That motion passes unanimously. So moving on to, hold on, our public hearing. We have a public hearing, one public hearing this evening. The public hearing one, it's Small Wireless Facilities Ordinance. This public hearing is to receive testimony regarding the proposal to amend Chapter 18.92 of the Development Code, adopt a new city council policy for small wireless facilities, and establish fees for small wireless facility applications and placements on city property. So the public hearing is now open. Community Development Director John Conley is going to provide the staff report.
Good evening, Mayor and council. Thank you. As you indicated, we're discussing small wireless facilities. The Federal Communications Commission has recently established an order in September of this year that establishes a broad preemption for small wireless facilities as a new regulatory classification. What that means, it reduces the timeframe for us to process applications for these types of facilities, and it limits our ability to use a discretionary review process in reviewing and approving them. The FCC's order becomes effective in January of 2019. And so there is some urgency in the staff, moving forward our own regulations and bringing these before council this evening. So what is a small wireless facility? This is the federal definition, which I'm not going to go through. But essentially, it's small facilities that are mounted on typically light poles or utility poles in the right-of-way. They can be located on private or public property. But they're essentially defined as antennas that are no greater than three cubic feet with associated equipment that's no greater than 28 cubic feet. That's the federal definition. And they're located on, typically on poles, not to exceed certain heights. Here's an example of a small facility. It shows the antenna package at the top of the light there, at the top of the pole. The antenna array is limited to three cubic feet. As I mentioned, the associated equipment is limited in the federal guidelines to 28 cubic feet, but the city can adopt more stringent guidelines. And so the City of Vista's regulations include an allowance for 17 cubic feet in commercial areas, or nine cubic feet in residential areas. And those are smaller, because they are to be consistent with the area that they're located in. And that's the average size of the utility boxes that are in those districts. Also, the equipment can be placed underground in locations where there are already underground utilities. If not, then we have to locate them either on the pole or in the right-of-way in an area that allows for public access. Here's an example that's in your packet that shows a light pole that's been fitted with a small wireless facility. The antenna is at the top of the pole, and then there's a small equipment enclosure that's mounted on the pole as well. This is typical of what these facilities look like in the right-of-way. So the new rules establish some timeframes. We call it the shot clock, for the time in which we must process these applications. So there's 60, 90, or 150 days, depending on the type of application. For the most part, these small wireless facilities fall under that 60-day timeframe. And so the city's within a limited timeframe to approve them. 90 days for new facilities on, I'm sorry, small wireless facilities on new structures, or co-locations that are not covered under a prior application. There are also some requirements for what is called Section 6409, which is a prior law that was established last year that allows for new additions to facilities within an envelope that's calculated by the federal rules. Everything else, which is essentially larger communication facilities, has to be processed within 150 days. So in order to implement this, we're recommending a zoning code amendment. It would amend Chapter 18.92 of the Development Code. This is what regulates wireless communication facilities on private property. The amendment would define small wireless facilities and exclude them specifically from the regulatory requirements in the code, in exchange for adoption of a council policy that would regulate these installations. So the council policy is included in your packet. It includes a process that's compliant with the FCC's order. It provides application and site requirements to fully evaluate new or co-located facilities. There are standard conditions, which are consistent with what we normally require. And there are locational requirements for preferences of where they should be sited, exactly following the requirements that are in our current code for these types of facilities. And then finally, there's design standards that are attached to regulate the appearance and integration of the facilities into the surrounding area. There's also a standardized pole license agreement that's included, which is essentially the agreement that we would have with the carrier, for them to put the pole in our right-of-way for your review, which we would use in all of these types of installations. Finally, there are fees that we've established as part of this process. These are less than what were required under the old regs, but that was part of the FCC's rules, that you had to establish new fees for your time to process these, and for annual fees that are paid to the jurisdiction in which the poles are located. So those fees are shown here, 490 per pole for our review fee, and 270 per pole on an annual basis. With that, staff's recommending that the council introduce and adopt an ordinance amending the Development Code, and adopt resolutions approving the city council policy, the standardized pole license agreement, and fees for small wireless facilities. And I should add that there is one change to the policy, which adjusted the notification requirement distance, which is included on the dais for your review. Otherwise, it's as presented. And that's my staff report. I'm available for any questions. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Contreras, I have two speakers. Would you like to hear them first, and then, okay, we'll do that. It's Sharir Afshar, followed by John Osborne. He'll be after that.
Good evening. My name is Sharir Afshar with Verizon Wireless. Thank you so much for this item. As we say in our letter of December 7th, 2018, from our SI council, Verizon deeply appreciates the city's proactive action on this item, moving so fast. Many cities may not have been able to move as fast as this city has. But we do have some concerns, and that's why the speaker slip says neutral. We're not opposed to the city taking action. We applaud the city staff for moving so fast. We just wish we had some more time to look at the ordinance and give you some constructive comments, and work with city staff to make sure it stands scrutiny and is applicable and practical over the coming months. The letter outlines all the details that we're interested in, height limits, placement of cabinets, the size of the antenna on top. They all not may look like the images that you saw. It's all in evolving technology, and we're moving fast to comply. All of us are in the carrier world. So like I said, we applaud the city for doing this, but we wish we had more time to work with the city to make sure it's just perfect, and we can immediately begin to put applications in your system and comply with the FCC order. That was all. Thank you so much.
Thank you. John Osborne?
Good evening, Mayor Ritter and council members. John Osborne, Director of External Affairs for AT&amp;T. First, I would like to say that AT&amp;T is largely supportive and appreciative of the ordinance that staff has put together. It's somewhat unusual in that we weren't really consulted or had a seat at the table in the development of such an ordinance. And we've been working with cities across the county, throughout the state, and really across the nation, on developing small wireless rules, or a master license agreement whereby we could put infrastructure on light poles and such. And therefore, we have, you know, a good deal of experience in this particular issue, and in particular, in reviewing the FCC order that was the trigger for the city putting together the ordinance. So we presented yesterday, now, we got noticed like everybody else does with a council meeting, that the document was available for review, and got it on Thursday. I was able to get some comments into you yesterday that outlined about 10 items that we found that were either in conflict with the FCC order, or could potentially lead to a conflict with the FCC order. And just some additional comments from the industry of what, of how we might work better together on some of those individual items. You know, we'd like to be perceived as a partner who's working with the city to bring a infrastructure to the residents at significant cost to our business. And, you know, we don't, we don't get any additional revenue when we put up a cell site. But you look at it conversely, and say, if you don't have the cell sites, then you don't have the revenue from your customers. So anyways, would like you, we'd really like to have an opportunity, have a seat at the table with staff, and provide comments and these types of things. And would recommend that council direct staff to work with the carriers, to provide input and review, and some of the comments before the ordinance goes through its final approval in the second reading.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Our city attorney, I'll call on him, and then Councilmember Contreras. City attorney.
Thank you, Mayor. I would simply like to note that the city staff welcomes the ability to work with the wireless providers. We feel it's important to have an ordinance in place before the FCC rules take final effect in early January. They will take effect before the council's next meeting. And like all ordinances, and it is subject to review and amendment in the future. And we look forward to working with your suggestions to see if further changes will be necessary. But staff believes it should go on the books at this time.
Councilmember Contreras.
Yeah, I have a question, Mr. Conley. Now, one of the pictures that we saw, it had the associated box on the light pole. Do we have, and I didn't see it in the report, but are we able to say, okay, with this antenna, all of the associated boxes must go on the light pole? Or is that just up to whomever is installing the antenna?
We can regulate the look of the equipment enclosure, and we can have a standard. But I don't think we can keep them from putting it on the ground if they need to put some ancillary equipment on the ground. So we would be looking at where it's located, whether it's underground or above ground. We don't have the ability to require that all of the ancillary equipment be located on the pole.
Okay. Yeah, my only concern is that because there's no upper threshold, and we already have very little sidewalk in some areas, that this is going to take more sidewalk. So, but thank you for the answer. Councilmember Rigby?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. The only question I have is on the distance for the notification. As you know, from my years of talking about notice to the community, 100 feet for me is just inadequate. And is there any way that we can increase that, that our notification requirements be a little bit more stringent than is what is proposed? I think 100 feet's just not enough.
So we have a notification requirement in there of our own accord. It's not a requirement of the FCC order. The intent is to notify the surrounding properties that could be affected, or that it's immediately adjacent to. We figured 100 feet covers a pretty good area. If it's in front of a commercial center, or a number of property owners, they would all immediately around there be notified. It's a requirement, so you're telling people, we're going to do it. So that's kind of hard from a planning perspective, because when people get notice, I think they feel like they have an opportunity to have some input, and potentially affect the outcome of what's happening. And in this case, that's not really available. We're noticing them out of courtesy to let them know that something's going in, but there is no process.
I see that, and I understand that. And I think we can still give notice to the people, additional 150 feet out there, saying the same thing. This is happening, just for your information. I would like to see it increased back up to the 250. That's, I don't know what my colleagues think about that. But I think the more notice that we give to our community, the better off that we are. Even if they can't say anything, or can't change anything on it, at least it's giving them notice that this is happening right around their facility, or their business, or house. So...
That's completely at the council's discretion.
City manager.
Yeah, I'd like to ask a question, Mayor. Mr. Conley, at what distance or interval will these cell repeaters likely be? You know, quarter mile, eighth of a mile, feet? Do you know?
They're typically a couple, 100 feet away. I'm going to actually ask if the gentleman from AT&amp;T can come back up. Mr. Osborne, he probably knows better.
So as we evolve to the 5G infrastructure, it's using something called millimeter wavelength technology. And this technology travels a very short distance, but carries a very high capacity of data. So the range around a cell site is about 300 feet, about one football field, if you will. And then you need to have one about every 300 feet, if you're going to have continuous communication. And we don't have to blanket this everywhere. It's not like we're trying to put an eight-lane highway into a town that needs a two-lane road. It would go where we have the highest density of traffic and need to provide that data service that is required in those areas. And we do continually monitor where the traffic is coming from, and we would build up to serve those locations.
Thank you.
Answer your question? Councilmember Franklin?
I guess I'm kind of curious what those lanes are. I'll follow up. I guess basically, I just wanted to say that I agree with the desire to, and the suggestion from staff that we go ahead and get an ordinance in place. I reached out to staff and asked, and they was told that they hired an outside attorney firm that specializes in this work to assist with us drafting this ordinance. But I would also say that we're committed to working with the carriers to improve it if there are suggestions. I don't think any of us on the council would oppose bringing back a package of fixes or improvements. I hope, one little suggestion, I hope that you're reaching out to some designers. If you're going to have one of these every 300 feet, I'd like to see something that's even more aesthetically pleasing. And so I'm sure I won't be the only city councilman across America saying that, but if you're going to build millions of these things and install them in, you know, every neighborhood across America, I hope you can do just a little bit better than these pictures we're seeing here, because those aren't real good to look at. They're, the top part's all right, but the little box, you know, if there's a way you can integrate it more, make it more streamlined, or I don't know, do something with the design. This is my suggestion.
Councilmember Green?
Yeah, and my question was right along the lines of Councilmember Franklin. I think I appreciate the relationships that we've built. I know Mr. Osborne shows up to all of our government affair meetings and is always giving us updates, and I appreciate Verizon being here as well. I'm sure you guys have a large market share in the city of Vista when it comes to a cellphone service for our constituents, so I just want to make sure that they for sure have a seat at the table, and that design implementation is definitely something that's at the forefront of your thought, because we are definitely moving into a new age here in Vista, and kind of the way that it looks matters to us. So just want to make sure that you guys know that, and we definitely don't want to jam it down your throat. We want to make sure that you have a seat at the table per se. So thank you guys for being here tonight, and thanks staff for putting this policy together. It looks great. Once again, with that, I guess that-
You're last, so you-
I'm the last again. Okay. So with that, I would like to close the public hearing and adopt city council ordinances amending Chapter 18.92 of the Vista Development Code and also approving City Council Policy 30014, the Small Wireless Facilities and Standardized Poll License Agreement. And lastly, we're going to adopt that resolution approving processing fees for small wireless facilities and annual fees for small wireless facilities on city property. That's the motion.
Staff recommendations, right?
Yes.
Okay. Do I have a second? Look, we have a motion and a second. Please cast your votes. That motion passes unanimously, and we'll look forward to working with the providers later in January. Okay, so with that, we are now on to our discussion items. We have five discussion items this evening. The first one is appointment of a deputy mayor, and we're going to appoint the deputy mayor for a one-year term. So with that, do I have a motion? If I don't have a motion, I would move that Councilmember Franklin would be the deputy mayor for one year. Do I get a second on that from anybody? Got quiet people? Nobody's going to second that. Okay, then it's up to you guys. Oh, you want to second it?
I'll second it.
Thank you, Joe. Thank you, Councilmember Green. Okay, then I have a motion and a second, so please cast your votes. That motion passes unanimously. So with that, we're going to go to item D2, which is appointments to outside agencies. This item is an annual annual appointment of the city council members to boards and committees of outside agencies. So I've submitted a memo and master appointments list for their consideration, so would look to anyone to move approval of that. Anyone? No one? Oh, I'm sorry. Councilmember Contreras. I learned to get that rolling off my mouth here. Councilmember Contreras.
Yeah, sure. I just want to say one thing about the appointments. You know, I am really, really happy to be the alternate here for Joe Green for the Encina ways, Rizwa. However, I do look forward in the future to being able to represent my district as, you know, on the board of one of these other agencies here, because I do believe that District One needs a voice, either on North County Transit District or Sandag. So I look forward to working with the council and the mayor, and next time that we, you know, are looking at this in a year, hopefully I'm able to have a position like that. Thank you.
Okay, and I actually have one speaker here, so Lisa Wellens.
Good evening, Madam Mayor and council members. My name is Lisa Wellens. I live on El Rado Terrace here in Vista, not too far from here. And I'd like to speak about the Sandag appointments. Sandag's accountability to San Diego residents is indirect and limited, though that has changed slightly with the passage of AB 805. Because the public does not elect the members of the Sandag Board, there is no process to ensure that the views of Vista Sandag representative necessarily align with the views of Vista residents. Instead of being accountable directly to the public, Sandag Board member's principal accountability is to his or her local appointed body, city council. Jeanette Siddique Khan, the New York City Transportation Commissioner under Bloomberg, said that if you want to have the most impact on your residents' lives, that you would be on one of two commissions, either the sanitation commission or the transportation commission. And that's why I'm here, to ask whoever it is appointed to be Vista Sandag representative and alternate representatives to use your powers for good. I'm asking that you see your appointment as a chance to make decisions that will do us the most good, that ensure that we have sustainable mobility choices. Widening the roads and freeways are not going to cut it long-term. We will always have cars, and we've spent almost a century investing mostly in that form of transportation and infrastructure. We need vision and courage from our Vista Sandag representative, and that gives us more options and understands that moving people is the point, not necessarily moving cars, which is the most inefficient mobility choice. You have the power to affect the single largest greenhouse gas-producing sector in San Diego County, CO2 emissions from cars and light-duty trucks. Those are powerful decisions, and the responsibility is great. I also hope that you understand Sandag's urban area transit strategy and make decisions that support that part of the plan that's moving us from about 2% mode share, active transportation, walking, biking, transit, to 15% by 2050. And be open to alternatives and see how other regions have become more livable and more desirable because they have more mobility options. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Rigby.
With that, Madam Mayor, I would move that we approve the appointments to outside agencies as they were presented.
Okay, do I have a second? Okay, I have a motion and a second. Please cast your votes. That motion passes unanimously. The third discussion item are our city council goals update. Economic Development Director Kevin Ham is going to provide a staff report on that.
Good evening, Mayor, and members of the council. Just queuing up a presentation here. So this item this evening is the semi-annual update for the council. The council set the goals on March 6th of this year. We gave our first update to council, putting together the report, on June 12th of this year. And this update highlights those items that have changed since that date to the end of this year. Updates are highlighted in red on the attached report and also in this presentation. Going over the priorities, high priorities are goals that have funding, staff support, and are of significant importance to the council and the community. Medium priority designations are goals that are routine, may have funding available or staff assigned in the near future. Low priority are goals that don't have funding or staff assigned. Going over the goals again are as follows. Number one, continue fiscal responsibility. Number two, continue to improve the flow of traffic, reduce congestion, and improve our roads and sidewalks. Number three, develop a strategic plan to address homelessness. Number four, continue to decrease blight and improve the image of our city. Number five, economic development. Number six, public safety. Number seven, parks and recreation. Number eight, maintain standards for multifamily housing. With regard to goal one, which is fiscal responsibility, we had one major update that we wanted to bring to the council's attention. With regard to objective B1, which is when presenting annual recommendations for the use of year-end fund balance monies, staff will include the city council proposal to incrementally increase the emergency reserves until the 35% goal is met. The major update here is that we have increased reserves from 28% to 30% with the fiscal year 2017-18 year-end fund balance. Any questions on that slide? Okay. With regard to goal two, continue to improve the flow of traffic, reduce congestion, and continue to improve our roads and sidewalks. Objective B5 is identify and implement road restriping projects that result in additional travel lanes to reduce congestion. The major update here is we've added a third lane northbound on East Vista Way from Civic Center Drive to Williamston with the addition of a raised median. Any questions? All right. Goal two, again, continue to improve the flow of traffic and reduce congestion. Objective B6 is widen roadways to create space for additional lanes, resulting in increased intersection and roadway capacity. We're currently working on the CIP to install a new northbound right-hand turn lane at Civic Center and Postal Way. Any questions? Moving on to goal three, objective A1, which is procuring a consultant to assist with the development and implementation of a homeless master plan and management plan. The major update here is that we have retained a consultant to develop a homeless strategic plan. The plan will be considered by the city council in spring of 2019. With regard to economic development, Paseo Santa Fe Phase III, two items, objective A1 and 2, continue progress on Phase II and III construction. And two, pursue grants and other funding sources to finance the construction of Phase III. We have a major update, which is securing a $2.5 million Smart Growth Incentive Program grant for Paseo Santa Fe Phase III from Sandag. Another item in economic development, objective D1, which is continue efforts to attract retail, restaurant, hotel uses to the city of Vista. Norreys Honda will be opening up here in the next six months. We also have the Ayers Hotel, which is under construction, and we have two brand-new restaurants that have opened in the downtown, Shacks and Doghouse. With regard to goal seven, which is parks and recreation, objective A1, which is increase utilization of Linder Roads Recreation Center. We're increasing utilization of the Linder Roads Recreation Center with signage to increase awareness. We've added a new teen program and programs with the county. Drop-in gym usage has increased to 8,500 from 8,000 in the previous year. With regard to goal eight, which is maintain standards for multifamily housing, objective B2, which is utilize affordable housing funds to partner with a developer to upgrade existing multifamily housing. The major update there is we are working with Community Housing Works on the Paseo Artist Village project. That concludes my presentation, and I and staff are available for questions.
Okay, we don't have any speakers, so Councilmember Contreras.
Yeah, just want to say a few things that seem like they're missing on our goals here. One thing that I want to discuss is resilience and climate readiness, simply because we are seeing that we're in a 24/7 fire season. And then when we're not in fire season and we get, you know, a little bit of rain, it ends up being a lot of rain. So these rain events are getting a very condensed as far as timeframe. And as we've seen in other cities, that could pose flooding issues. I mean, we've seen it here in this city, but, you know, recently in Oceanside, there are people surfing on Coast Highway and not actually on the ocean, so in the ocean. I would like to see us get really serious about climate readiness and resilience, making sure that we have planning for any heat waves that come up. I know we have cool zones, but I would like to see, you know, do we have an assessment as to whether these cool zones are located in areas where we have more vulnerable populations, you know, flooding planning, like I said. And then when it comes to our emergency management system, I just want to make sure that we have good communication out to the city of Vista to make sure that individuals know how to get the most up-to-date information. You know, the last fire that got really close here to Vista, mandatory evacuation was about, you know, street away from where I live, and I'm in the urban center. And my concern is that, you know, a lot of, a significant amount of residents in Vista do not have access to transportation. So when it comes to being prepared to evacuate because of some natural, you know, disaster, I just want to make sure that everybody knows how to get the most up-to-date information. So I'm not exactly sure if we have any kind of communication campaign going out that is going to serve that purpose or that is serving that purpose, but I do want to make sure that we take climate readiness very seriously here in Vista. Thank you.
Councilmember Rigby.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I wanted to say thank you to Mr. Ham as well as all staff, because we did spend quite a lot of time going over our goals. We do this every two years, council goals, and it's reflected on what we hear from the community and what we see in the community. So we did come up with some rather ambitious goals this time around, and we didn't limit ourselves to the three or four of years past. So I just wanted to say thank you for the work that you've done on our behalf and on the city's behalf on achieving what we have on the goals. And we still have a ways to go with some of these, and I recognize that, but this is a very good start, and I wanted to say thank you.
Councilmember Green.
Also, thank you, Mr. Ham, for this amazing presentation. As Councilwoman Rigby said, our eight goals were, came up with at our meeting once every couple of years. When I first got on to, I was like, hey, we're changing them. So I'm excited that you have great ideas. It's good to have good ideas coming towards our council. I did notice that we didn't have updates on items four and six, which were the decrease of blight and improve the image of our city, and also public safety. I know that public safety, you know, from a crime standpoint, we're at an all-time low, so we're only getting better, I'm sure, as we're fantastic. But from a decrease blight and improve city image, we have parks coming in and different stuff as well on the horizon, right?
Yes, we do. We have two new parks that are on the horizon. Public Works and Engineering is making headway in a lot of areas along the arterials, as you've seen cleaned up. So I think there is a lot of blight that's been reduced, and I think the city's looking better. It just didn't fall into some of these categories yet, but the parks definitely will.
One of the things I did, we didn't include, which is we're working with Sprouts, you know, East Vista Way, so that's a private development that we're working on. We're also working with some others, so we haven't completed that yet. That's why it's not on the list.
Awesome. But definitely in the process, and by 2020, a lot of these goals are going to be handled, which is awesome to actually see progress. One question that I had, or actually statement that I have, is we secured the $2.5 million Smart Growth Incentive Program for Paseo Santa Fe, and I know we had Phase II fully funded. So this is, how much of a dent does this put in Phase III from a funding standpoint? I know we want to get to where it's finally fully funded. How, where does this put us at?
So we're working towards that. It's a close to 25%, it's a little more than 25% of the funding, but we are working towards putting together a package to bring before you so that we can fully fund- towards putting together a package to bring before you so that we can fully fund Phase III in the future. And hopefully, as Phase II and the undergrounding for Phase III is done, we can continue the effort and just finish Phase III.
Perfect, all right. Thank you so much, and thank you again, Mr. Hamm, for this great report. I really appreciate it.
Okay, Councilmember Franklin, you're next, but I have a speaker that just came in here. Okay, Joshua Tienda.
I noticed in the, good evening, my name is Councilman, Councilmembers. I noticed one item that's particularly missing in the city goals, or probably, and that is road improvements, because I know you have been doing road improvements a lot, a lot, you know, been fixing the roads, but there are some parts where the roads look like, they look like, like, you know, cobblestones, they're very broken. I know in my, in my, where I live, in, like, Kaijools, and their, their area, there's roads that are, they, they look like they, like you put cobblestones and it's broke, very broken, so I wanted, want to know what the city councils want, going to do to continue to do road improvements in those areas where probably may have been overlooked.
Thank you. City manager, you want to address that?
Sure. I think as the council knows, over the last, let's say, eight, nine years, we've primarily focused on arterials, collector streets, and I think we've done a much better job of maintaining those heavily traveled roadways that affect most of Vistans and as well as other people that travel throughout our town. We are starting to, with new funding sources, we are starting to work up a plan to look at all the residential streets. And so this year, we're putting 1.6 million into residential streets. Starting next fiscal year, which starts July of 2019, we'll put about 2.5 to 2.6 million dollars into residential streets, and we'll keep that up. And our goal is, over the next seven, eight, nine years, that we will have completed a majority of the residential streets throughout the city.
One of the issues also is that some of the streets are private streets. I always come across those streets, and I always talk to my city manager and tell him we need to fix it, and he said, you can't fix a private, if you fix one private street, you have to fix all the private streets in the city, and we can't afford to do that. And so a lot of times, a lot of, I mean, there's some, the streets in Vista that I think are awful, they're dirt, and so, but we can't, because they're private streets, we can't do it. And I was trying to think even of a way to do it. I was thinking, if we backcharge the owner, because some of the owners are absent, but then they would raise the rent on people, and then they wouldn't like that, because, you know, to pay for the streets. So I haven't come up with an answer yet, but I, there's got to be an answer for private streets, because a lot of them are bad, and we can't fix them, all of them, so. Anyway, Councilmember Franklin.
Thank you, Mayor. I would just note there that improve roads and sidewalks is definitely a part of goal number two in the top line, so, but you're, that's a good point, Joshua, we need to continue to focus on that. And the other thing I just wanted to point out is we also have the success soon, and maybe Mr. Johnson can remind us what date our new deputy is going to join us in serving Vista.
The additional deputy, I believe, is going through the county process. I believe it's in either December or January, from my understanding, the sheriff's captain, Greg Reilerstam.
Oh.
Good, bring extra ring her up, we want to meet her. This is our brand-new.
No, you have to come, come all the way down here, we want to meet you.
Welcome to Vista.
So tell us your name, and how long have you been on the force? Do you just come through the academy, or you've been serving somewhere else?
My name is Colleen McMahon. I've been with our department for a little over five years. I worked two years in the jails, and I've been on Vista Patrol for about three years. So I'm excited to be here.
Excellent, wonderful, thank you. Welcome to Vista.
Thanks for having me.
We're happy to have you. Thank you.
That's great. That was all I had.
Okay, with that, this was just a receive, it, there was, we don't need any.
That's correct. If I could say one final thing, I do want to say thank you to Mr. Hamm as well as all the staff that work throughout the departments on all our goals. They do a great job, and it is Mr. Hamm's birthday tonight, so he had the pleasure of presenting before you tonight.
Happy birthday.
Happy birthday.
Happy birthday.
Happy birthday.
You had to spend the evening with us.
25 looks good on you.
Thanks for all you do for our city. We appreciate you, Mr. Hamm. Yes.
Before we bring this one to a close, I was just going to say, I would enjoy having maybe a little bit more granular level detail conversation. We've got eight goals here. Maybe once a month, we could get into one subject matter as a recurring item and talk about progress, just to keep these conversations going. Just a suggestion.
Okay, I'll take that. Okay, so with that, we're going to move on to item D4, implementation of Measure Z by amending Chapter 5.04 and adopting an urgency ordinance establishing a moratorium on marijuana-related uses other than those permitted by Measure Z. So City Attorney Joe Piper's going to provide the staff report, and then after that, I have one, two, like, six, six or seven speakers here.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Yes, item D4 encompasses two proposed ordinances. The first ordinance relates to the establishment of business licenses for dispensaries that are permitted under Measure Z. We need to amend our business license ordinance, which currently does not encompass business licenses for marijuana, in order to permit them to be able to implement Measure Z. The second ordinance is an urgency zoning ordinance, which has been prepared and prohibits, as we always have, the establishment of all marijuana-related uses except those which are permitted by Measure Z. So this does not in any way interfere with Measure Z, and in fact, it is intended to make sure that the dispensaries that are going to invest their time and effort in coming in under Measure Z are not undercut by illegal operations within the city. And we believe that the moratorium is necessary because of potential confusion by some people thinking that in some way, Measure Z has opened this up to, to anyone and to everyone, and that is certainly not the case, and we do not want to have people initiating illegal operations here while we're getting the Measure Z people set up. That concludes my presentation. We're happy to answer any questions.
Okay, shall we, our speakers first? Okay. John, is your name I hear for now? Okay. Okay, first speaker is Judy Strang, that'd be followed by Kathleen Lipit, and then be followed by Kelly Hayes.
Good evening, City Council, and congratulations, Mayor Ritter, and congratulations, City Council member Franklin, and welcome, Karina. I am a public health educator, and I wanted to address the two ordinances that you're considering. I understand the ordinance regarding the emergency is to clarify, as you just did, that in Vista there would be no marijuana businesses, except that they were first permitted by the city and the state. And then in the business license you talk about, and there's some confusing language about felonies within the last four years, and I'm sure you'll clarify that, but I'd also like to suggest that because the goal of these ordinances are to create a honorable application list, if you will, that perhaps those who have operated illegally in the city of Vista in the past and maybe, maybe over the next couple of months accidentally, also not be considered as applicants, because this has been a controversial situation, and I know your goal is to have honorable applicants. And so anyone who's dishonored the laws of Vista, I think, should probably be disqualified from being applicants, so I'd like to make that recommendation. I'd also like to make the recommendation that those things you identify as being sensitive uses, that they definitely be 1,000 feet away from marijuana businesses, and that your list of sensitive uses is amplified. I noticed that you have schools, but I think there is a larger range of youth-oriented facilities that maybe your definition could include. I'd also like to suggest, and I really concurred with City Council members, member Rigby's concerned about notification, that the notification be expanded for the businesses around the proposed marijuana business, also to 1,000 feet, so that everyone who's going to be impacted within that 1,000 feet would know. It's very difficult on community members and businesses to find out after the fact, and I think in these beginning months, it's probably wise to make sure that everyone who can know about a business locating in their neighborhood, get that information more completely. And finally, I'd just like to suggest that you use the opportunity of review, and perhaps a six-month and a year-out review, once the applicants do open, to see what sort of impacts might be occurring in our neighborhoods, and have a report back to City Council. Thank you.
Thank you. Kathleen Lipit, followed by Kelly Hayes, and she'll be followed by Christopher Allen Tripp.
Good evening, Council. My name is Kathleen Lipit. I'm a public health practitioner, and I'm here on behalf of Coastal Communities Drug-Free Coalition. Many of the city's goals for 2018, 2020 might be compromised with unintended consequences by Measure Z if it isn't implemented appropriately. Perhaps additional sensitive uses that might be considered could include childcare centers, minor-oriented facilities, treatment and recovery centers, parks, libraries, residential care facilities, and playgrounds. Transparency is of vital importance, and anyone with a 20% or greater ownership should be identified by name and not hidden behind LLC designations. And once permitted, the permit can neither be sold nor transferred without the application process beginning from all over again. Measure Z, although it's limited to medical use of marijuana, or marijuana as a medicine, often that term is rather vague to most of the public. They, most of them could not provide you a definition for what that term actually refers to. And the public is likely also unaware that cannabis-derived CBD product that has met qualifications as a medicine is Epidiolex. It's a prescription-based medicine used for the treatment of epilepsy. But even that purified and dose-specific prescription medication is not free from side effects. Its own manufacturer, GW Pharmaceuticals, acknowledges its potential for lack of efficacy, potential liver damage, and other side effects. The marijuana industry's CBD products are, could be far more problematic. The FDA remains silent on the potentials for harm, and state agencies like the BCC, already highly influenced by the industry, don't have the resources to ensure product safety, even if they chose to do so. The state agency that the public believes will protect them from tainted products are far more concerned with the industry's health. 3% of cannabis products have failed tests, testing due to pesticides, and the BCC hasn't bothered to recall the tainted or suspect CBD products, to inform the public of the troubling findings that 20% of the products have been found to be contaminated, or that testing data has been falsified. And the BCC won't require toxicity testing for such things as heavy metals until January. My point is that the public should be better informed about what these products are and are not. Thank you.
Thank you. Kelly Hayes. Kelly's followed by Christopher Allen Tripp, and followed by Raul Montes.
Good evening, Council. My name is Kelly Hayes. I am a cannabis attorney, and I work in local licensing and state regulations. I will keep this brief, as I've already provided you with email correspondence, and I appreciate your response, Mr. Piper. My concern is with Section 5.04145 on the prohibition and issuance of the business licenses. Section C states that the applicant must establish that all requirements have been met for issuance of a license contained in Chapter 5.94 and state law. Once this is established, the city will issue a local license pursuant to that section. However, I appreciate Mr. Piper's response that it is not the intention of the city of Vista to create a catch-22, or to prohibit any businesses from operating without first issuing their local license. However, this is not the way that the ordinance currently reads. Measure Z, which was enacted by the people of Vista, specifically states in Section 5.94.070 subsection H, that the city shall issue as a ministerial duty notices of completed registration, certificates of occupancy, and business licenses to qualified cannabis businesses in priority order as received and processed. State law and regulations will not allow a business to operate without a state annual license, which currently takes about eight weeks to process. State regulations require that local authorization for a state annual license to be issued. I merely ask that you consider revising the regulations so that it is consistent with state law and Measure Z and the will of the people. Thank you.
Thank you. Christopher Allen Tripp.
First of all, I would like to thank all of the speakers that just spoke on this topic, because they've set me up for what I'd like to say. We've come here before, council before, with regard to not just setting up a third-party independent testing laboratory, but to put in research and development labs for cannabis and for hemp, extracts, isolates, and drug delivery vehicles, and we've added to that an environmental assessment and impact lab for runoff, waste, and so on. With the kinds of delays that you have in mind here with this 45-day window, let's talk about what then is about 45 days, and then an application process of undefined length with you after that, and then three months to build the facilities and build out the buildings and order the equipment. That puts us six months out from now, and we've tried to work with the delays that we face, and we're willing to wait for the vote. And I'm wondering, why is it that the labs are being added into the group of potential risk for the public, where they're the ones that provide the public safety? I've heard a lot of things about the labs that have failed to do their job. We're not that lab. We're going to have all of the tests, all of the equipment, and have tests that aren't even required at this point for things like mildicides, growth modifiers and regulators, things that you're not testing for that could impact public health. We're here to help bring science here, and I'm wondering why labs are being put on the back shelf, given they have the longest lead time to get set up.
Thank you, sir. Raul Montes, followed by Bernard Gooden.
Evening, Madam Mayor, esteemed members of the City Council, staff. My name is Raul. I'm a former Navy veteran. I was a hospital corpsman for six years. I did a combat pump to Iraq as a combat medic. With that said, I understand the efficacy of marijuana, and I'm probably one of the only proponents, that's a former veteran, that will pass your analysis. So with that said, I believe actually Kelly knocked out most of what I was going to talk Measure Z requires that an applicant has waited their fair turn, who's waited their fair turn to do their business in their hometown, to wait, six months prior to application. So, long story short, I believe it was Section C of the, of Measure Z requires that people have basically been in business for six months prior to being able to place their application. What that looks like to me is a rapid bid for pre-established, currently illegal, existing dispensaries to try to legitimize under the new framework. This is a huge concern to me. If I wanted to open up a business in my own hometown, I have to essentially wait for somebody else who's already been running their business illegally, mind you, before I can put in my bid. I believe it's in the city's best interest to clarify, the more it's I believe it's in the city's best interest, to clarify the moratorium. I think it's in the city's best interest to outright disqualify individuals who have been running dispensaries illegally. And then I also think that it would be in the city's best interest to clarify the willingness to work with those individuals that are here trying to establish these businesses within their own cities, especially considering that a lot of these cannabis corporations are going to be coming in and essentially trying to snatch up the dispensaries as much as they can right off the bat. So those are my concerns. I wish you guys a good night, and thank you for your time.
Thank you, sir. Bernard Gudin.
Good evening, Madam Secretary, council members and staff. I first like to thank Doc. I'm going to caveat right on what he said in regards to the ordinance, because I have the same complaint. So I assume great minds think alike. He's a Navy veteran, I'm a Marine veteran. So we have Chapter 5.94, Section 594050. What he was referring to was line 16. Applicants' business must have been in existence for a minimum of six months, contingent to prior issuance of a business license under this article. So as the acting CEO for Sky, and the COO right here, my wife, we've been looking in this city, because we live in this city. We pay taxes in this city. For 10 years, we moved from Alabama, we joined the military, we've been in this city, as well as Oceanside and the other San Diego areas. Now it's our opportunity to enter into the cannabis business in our area to provide a secondary means for medications to people we can't. The big-name brands are already, they're already moving in. You can see them if you've been around, if you've actually been in these specific AOs to see. They're already trying to move in. They already acquired some of their spots, and they've already started remodeling these places. And the license hadn't even been adopted yet, and hadn't even been signed in yet, and you haven't even voted yet, as we can see. I just want to make sure that the young entrepreneur who's trying to come into it the right way isn't assassinated immediately before everything even starts. I want us to have the opportunity. As a leader myself, I understand that the leader, the city attorney, he had to look at, and he had ensured that we had the most qualified candidates, so that the people can be safe and that these businesses will operate within a strict confines of an SOP, and everything will be well in the community. But I can tell you, as a service member of 10 years, I've stood numerous CGIPs, I've stood inspections where if I failed an inspection, it could be something where we lose a life. I'm pretty sure I can operate a cannabis business, and I have the attitude and the aptitude needed in order to acquire people if I need to build a team, to where I can actually run this business and ensure that it meets the standard and the requirements for the city of Vista. My small recommendation would be to simply delete line 16, push it to the end of this chapter, and say, "All personnel who meet the specific requirements above may submit an application." Now, I know that this may bring a burden on the city, man that you, being that you may receive a few more applications, but I can assure that it won't be a heavy burden, as the city of San Diego is a prime example. They offer 36 licenses, they've only given out 20, and they still have two or three available in a city like that. I'm pretty sure Vista's not going to have too much of a workload for the staff to accommodate in that amount of time. Like I said, once again, please look into potentially amending this ordinance to where the normal people and the young, hungry entrepreneurs can also enter into this business. Thank you.
Thank you. City Attorney, can I ask him a question? Isn't that, isn't that what they voted in? That was in the ordinance that they voted in?
The, the ordinance, Proposition Z, was not, as many people know, but perhaps not everyone, was not drafted by the city or the city attorney. It was drafted by individuals who wished to open businesses here in the city, and all of the rules and limitations, conditions that you find in Chapter 5.94 were drafted outside, but they have been adopted by the people at the vote. So they are the law. We can clarify things, we can work with regulations to cover issues that are not identified, or there are some inconsistencies within the measure itself that reflect drafting errors. We can work with those, but we do not have the power to change the laws that were adopted by the people where those are very clear. And I should also make it clear to everyone that I certainly would not say that our office was encouraged or fond of the passage of Measure Z, but we are going to implement it. We're going to implement it according to its terms and conditions, and we're going to make it work within the spirit of what the people of Vista voted to pass.
I have one more speaker, Sergio Franco.
Good afternoon. Thank you, city council members. I guess I just want to, just to put this on record, just to clarify a couple of things as far as with the implementation of medical marijuana. It's a non-diversion clause that it has in Attorney General Guidelines. It requires for a retailer to also be able to have members cultivate, manufacture, and, you know, pretty much support their nonprofits, because Prop 215, it's all nonprofit. The gentleman over there, he might have it a little bit mixed up, and that's another thing that I would like for the city to clarify, is the difference between Prop 215 and Prop 64. One is recreational, one is non-recreational. Medical nonprofit existed way before 64. So I think that's kind of the big, you know, confusion as far as, you know, the implementation of this measure. A lot of people are looking at it as Prop 64, when it's really Prop 215. Attorney General Guidelines, like I said, they create a non-diversion clause in the Attorney General Guidelines for us to be able to cultivate all medication. So I guess, in theory, what I'm trying to say is, my, members to a collective in the city of Vista, would they be able to grow their own marijuana and sell it back to the collectives? And that is something that we need to define, as well as the fact that recreational can be regulated by the federal government. Medical is a little bit less regulated by the federal government, due to the fact that it's medical. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, councilmember. Do you want to say something? No.
Thank you, Mayor. I would clarify that nothing in the moratorium affects the rights of an individual patient to grow their own, to grow or to use cannabis as permitted by state law. It simply affects the would-be retail operations.
Councilmember Franklin.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I guess I just wanted to open, since this is our first conversation on the topic since the passage of Prop Z, Measure Z, by saying that I respect the fact that Measure Z was passed by the people of Vista, and it's the will of the people. And from this council member, you have the commitment that the city will implement it fairly, and will execute the will of the people, because we are here to represent the will of the people. So whether it was our personal preference or not, it was not mine, I primarily have issue and take issue with the storefront operations, because I think that when they're done wrong, I think they're an attack on the property value of people that own homes and live in our city. Now, I am so hopeful to be proven wrong, and I hope that there are good business operators that will go above and beyond with providing safe traffic, ingress and egress, who will be good neighbors, who will not create nuisances. I truly hope that that's the case. I'm very hopeful for that. Couple of questions that were raised by speakers I have for staff. Because Measure Z was written by individual members of the public and submitted and approved by the public, and we don't have the power to amend it, the question about whether we could prohibit those who had previously violated our laws is a fine question. Certainly, I think, probably would be the preference of the council, certainly would be mine, to prohibit those individuals. But I'm not sure that we've retained the authority under Measure Z to do that.
Councilmember Franklin, I, my current view, and we are getting into the process of preparing regulations to implement Proposition Z, but at the moment, my view is we do not have that power.
Understand. I did want to ask, if I might, Madam Mayor, the gentleman who wants to invest in the testing facility, could I ask him a question about how many people that he intends to employ when he's fully operational?
The basic skeleton crew for the third-party lab requires six people to run the apparatus there. The research and development labs will have five to six people also. The environmental lab's going to come up slow, because we don't have client base for that. We'd have to build the business and go out and soliciting people to...
So these are laboratories, all of which you intend to build or would like to build in Vista?
Yes. And we're going to have the ownership worked out so that only one owner for the third-party lab, and then the other ones under separate ownership, so that we can coordinate these different facilities together. We'd like to do it in a business park or a set of suites for a campus, so that we can actually conserve time and energy and money and transportation and all that by having all of those assets in place there.
So this is my thought. Thank you very much. This is my thought. The people have authorized 11 storefronts. If there is a technology business that would be necessary to the operation, or would be successful, as we in these conversations have talked about in the past, you know, the voters have made this legal at the state level. I'm not offering a decision that I want to, I'm not going to paint myself in a corner on this, but I'm not outwardly opposed to some ancillary businesses with a lot of careful thought from the council. And I suspect there may be interest in businesses that could provide high-paying jobs and investment in our community. So I guess all I'm wanting to signal is that I think it's a reasonable conversation that we should have, and that I think that the gentleman and any other operator who is interested, I think, should offer an unsolicited proposal, laying out the specifics, so that staff could review, and so that members of the council could review what's proposed. You know, we're, we're in a brave new world here. So I think the 45-day moratorium makes sense, because it is a temporary moratorium. It'll force us back to the discussion in the very near future, and we don't have to wait 45 days. If we find a particular use, like a testing laboratory, that we find is going to create, you know, high-paying jobs and investment in our city, then perhaps that's something we want to talk about sooner. I think that's all I have to add at this moment.
Thank you. I actually agree with you on that. Councilmember Green.
Yeah, thank you, Councilmember Franklin. And I wanted to say that as well, that as elected officials, we definitely want to honor the will of the people, and we want to make sure that Measure Z is implemented exactly how you wanted it. Unfortunately, we don't have the authority to delete different lines that are within the policy that were voted in by the city. So some of those stipulations that you guys would like us to change, unfortunately, we can't. That's the way the proposition was drawn up. That's, that's law, and we have to abide by the law. I also did want to address your testing facility. I know that Measure AA did pass, which also gave us the ability to implement taxes on the cultivation, manufacturing, testing, distribution, the other avenues of medical marijuana moving forward. And I, it sounds like my council will be open to that. I'm sure we'll be directing staff to figure out how we can implement testing facilities and possibly other facilities that could create high-paying jobs for Vistans within our community, being that's what our community said. Yes, sir. Yes, sir. So anyways, I just wanted to make sure that you know that we are aware of that. Measure AA that was passed was kind of saying, hey, if they, if they did pass that, as a council, we came up with that, so that we would be ready for it. And this moratorium is basically just saying, hey, you know, marijuana's illegal still, other than the Measure Z stuff. We want to kind of get that going before we implement anything else moving forward. And it's definitely something that I support, and I appreciate the staff working so hard to bring this policy forward. Whether you supported it or not, it's great that you guys have worked so hard to determine what it is and bring it forward to the public and help implement it the way that they wanted. So thank you so much for that.
With that, would you like to make a motion? You're the last, you're the end.
I move that we accept staff's recommendation and adopt the city ordinance as posted.
You have to start reversing how you're speaking, and they come this way. Okay. Please cash your votes. That motion passes unanimously. Then we come to our last discussion item. It's the second reading of ordinance 2018-15, Amendment to PURS Contract and Human Resources Director...
Madam Mayor, I apologize to interrupt you, but for those that are leaving right now, there were some folks that I wanted to talk with, and if folks would remain, I'd like to ask some of the different folks, I'd like to have some conversations. We're going to be done here in just a few minutes. If you want to have some input and answer some questions, I'd urge you to consider staying.
Okay. Back to Dolores Gascon, who's going to provide the staff report.
Thank you, Mayor and the city council. This item continues the discussion that we had on November 13th regarding an amendment to the city's CAL PURS contract. The amendment enables the city to comply with portions of its MOU with the Vista Firefighters Association. The amendment will require an ordinance, and tonight we are having the second reading of that ordinance. CAL PURS requires the item be placed on a public agenda, but it cannot be on the consent calendar, so instead, we've listed it as a discussion item. And that concludes my report, and I'm available for any questions you may have.
Councilmember Franklin.
Madam Mayor, this agreement represents a win-win for the firefighters and for the city, and so I would move that we would approve this item and approve the resolution drafted by staff.
And I would second that motion.
Did you have anything more? Is that, is that it?
No, that's it.
Okay. Please cash your votes. That motion passes unanimously. So with that, do I have any oral speakers? I have no oral speakers, no oral speaker for communication. And so with that, we will go to, I have a couple of announcements here real quick, like, one, the Wave Water Park is holding its first Penguin plunge this Saturday, December 15th, from 10:00 in the morning until 12:00. It's a free event, open to anyone at least 42 inches in height. Participants who slide down the water slide and plunge into the icy pool will receive a free 2019 Wave admission ticket. They can give me two years' worth to do that.
No, thank you.
So, no, thank you. Okay. But, but there will be some participants. It'll be fun to watch. So come and watch. It's this Saturday, December 15th, 10 to 12. If you're leaving town for the holidays, contact the Vista Sheriff's Senior Patrol, and they'll schedule a free home check while you're away. So you can call 760-940-4434. That's 760-940-4434, to set up a watch for, for your home while you're gone. And then welcome again to the new council member, Karina Contreras. Look forward to working with you. Finished her first meeting. And we, as the city council, the community and business leaders, build upon our 2018 accomplishments in the new year, and you will be with us, and we appreciate that. So happy holidays, holidays to everyone, and a happy new year. And I will start, and I'll start on there if you have anything you'd like to say for the good of the order here.
Thank you very, very much for the kind words, and, and like I said, I really look forward to collaborating with all these great representatives and leaders of the community, and I hope everybody has some really awesome holidays coming up.
Thank you. Thank you. Councilmember Green.
All right. Thank everybody for coming. Thank everybody for showing up, and thank everybody for speaking tonight. I do want to let you know that I will be taking the Penguin plunge on Saturday. Yes, I've been told that I do not exceed the maximum weight limit, although I tried to bulk up during the holidays, just so I didn't. It is only a height requirement. So just so you guys know, chubby dude going down a slide into cold water on Saturday, come on down. I'm looking forward to that free Wave ticket. The other thing is, this Sunday at 1:00, we have our Only Losers Litter Trash Walk at the Vista Transit Center. So if you want to come pick up some trash, and it's real therapeutic. We throw headphones on, and we get these cool little grabbers and gloves and... We throw headphones on, and we get these cool little grabbers and gloves and stuff, and it's awesome to clean the community up. So if you want to come hang out and clean some trash up, Sunday, 1:00, Vista Transit Center, come hang out. And once again, thank you all of my council members for being here, and welcome to our newest council member, Karina Contreras. I look forward to working with you in the future. Thank you.
Councilmember Franklin.
I would just add that I know that Gary and Julie Garretson will join me in saying that picking up trash can actually be fun. We've, we've shared that pleasure together. Now, I just want to say, welcome to our newest member of the council, and look forward to serving with all of you for the next four years to be the better men of our city.
That's Gary's birthday today, too. Did you...
Happy birthday.
Happy birthday, Gary.
Okay. Councilmember Rigby.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I just wanted to report out that last week, I was up in Garden Grove for the California League of Cities League Leaders Conference, and it was primarily for our goal-setting for the 2019 year, about what we are going to work on together as the League of California Cities, as the city's representative. And we put together our five goals for 2019, and they are for disaster preparedness and recovery, as well as climate resiliency, and understanding the issues that climate plays in our disasters, not just the fires, but also the floods, the earthquakes, et cetera, et cetera. And so we're going to be putting together a plan of action, working with our state legislators and incorporating that. The second one would be addressing the housing issues that we have in the state of California. And this time, we are finally going to be addressing some of the regulation issues that create or increase the cost of housing in California, not just mandating more housing, more housing, but trying to address the issues and the causes of the crisis to begin with. Third, we have public safety issues. One of the things that was of great discussion on public safety was the league wants to work on repealing or amending Props 57 and 47, as well as AB 109, which have created some additional issues for law enforcement in our communities. The fourth one is water infrastructure for storage, conveyance, et cetera, because we do need to work on, in San Diego County, we have actually done a really good job on our own, taking care of our water needs. The rest of the state has not, so we need to work on that statewide as well. And then the fifth goal, and usually we have four goals, this year we had five goals, was the sustainability of the pensions program with CalPERS. So we'll be going back up there, and I'm, I'll be going back up, I'm sure, our newest council member, Karina Contreras, will be going up to the new mayor's and council members' conference in January. And as the incoming president for the department, for the mayors and council members, I will be up there for that academy as well, and will be doing two of them, so I'll be up there for both of them. But, speaking of league business, I just completed two years as the president for the San Diego County Division. And one of the rules for the San Diego County Division is, you have to have a clerk or a secretary for the division to handle all of the things that one might expect, facilitating events, facilities, taking the dues that are required, setting up the RSVPs, et cetera. And the lucky person who gets to do that is mandatory that it's the city clerk of the city from the president. And having been the president for the last two years, the division's clerk and secretary has been our very own Kathy Valdez. Now Kathy didn't get to say yes or no, she wanted to ride this journey with me. She just graciously agreed, and she smiled, and she was cheerful and helpful all along the way. And I want to say to Kathy, thank you so much. You are awesome. You did a great job for the entire division, and you represented not only the League of Cities well, but you represented Vista well. And I want to say thank you very much for all you did for all of us, and I have a little token of appreciation. And that concludes my remarks. Thank you.
Very nice. Okay, city manager.
Yes, Mayor, thank you.
I didn't give you a raise this time, a promotion? I just called you the city manager.
Thank you, I appreciate that. I just want to let everybody know that construction on the new roundabout at Mar Vista Drive in Avacato and Presley will be starting next week. This is done by the Sierra Town Homes Development on South Santa Fe, and it's estimated that it'll be completed by the end of January. So that'll be a good thing for that area.
Will that affect traffic coming in the morning and evening? Will they still be able to get through there?
They'll still be able to get through, we're not blocking out lanes.
Okay.
The downtown Creek Walk Park lighting project is complete by Public Works, so if you haven't been out there at nighttime, it is much brighter. Public Works installed the LED lights out there and did a great job, and so it's, has the appearance of a safer area, and in conjunction with the apartments that are opening up as we speak. And then lastly, city hall offices will be, all city offices, I should say, will be closed between December 24th and January 2nd. So we will be closed, and then if you have trash day that falls after December 25th or January 1st, that will be delayed by one day as well. And did want to welcome Councilmember Contreras.
How about our city attorney, Darryl Paper?
I'd like to also welcome Councilmember Contreras, and welcome back to our other returning council members. I'd also like to wish everyone happy holidays, Merry Christmas, Happy New Year, and we look forward to getting all of Measure Z put together in the four-part of the new year.
How about our city clerk? Anything? Kathy Valdez.
I'd like to echo those comments, and congratulating Mayor and Councilmember Franklin, and welcoming Councilmember Contreras. Look forward to working with all of you, and happy holidays.
Thank you. How about Claire, Assistant City Clerk? You're good. Okay. With that, we are adjourned. 8:08.
You're almost ready. Was it 8:19?